Good evening. I'm Ellen Stewart, Principal at North Junior High School. And I have two of the assistant administrators here. To my right is Richmond Tway and to his right is Travis Okerlin. And then we have students that will do a presentation right at the end. We'll introduce them at that time. North Junior High School. Who are the Eagles of North Junior High School? Here are some of the enrollment demographics that we have at North. As you can see, forty-five percent of our students are white. And then we have thirty-four percent black, eight percent Hispanic, one percent American Indian, and seven percent is what they call other or two or more races. Enrollment by special population, EL is about twenty-nine percent, SPED sixteen percent, free and reduced persons is sixty-nine percent. North Junior High School's target goals through a racial equity lens, there's four: analysis of assessment, racially conscious PLC, lesson planning, and powerful instruction. The question may come up, why through a racial equity lens? There's a difference between equality and equity. The picture to the left is equality, if everybody gets the same. The end result is not the same versus equity. And in another way that you could say it is a racially equitable society is one in which distribution of resources and opportunities is not determined or predictable by race. And now, Mr. Tway.
The next part of our presentation, we're going to be talking about our overall MCA performance. So when we look at the MCA math trends for all grades in 2016, we're down at the same percent as the state. When we look at our MCA sixth grade Hispanic students, Hispanic sixth grade has doubled in math in 2016. What's nice about this data is that Hispanic students comprise of only eight percent of our total population. For the next data, it's our MCA reading trends for all grades. If you look at from 2014, 2015, 2016, we decrease each year in reading. And for the last graph, for our grade six to eight reading MCA for our non-EL black students, as you can see that from 2015 to 2016, that our black students or non-EL black students are at four percent. I'll pass it off to Mr. Okerlin.
Good evening. So I'm here to talk a little bit about mindful lesson plan. You'll notice that everything is through a racial equity lens. Wait, sorry, Rachel Conscious PLC. Somehow I goofed it up. I apologize. I think we're out of order here. This is you then, right?
Yep, okay. So as part of our PLC, we look at what's going on with our students in the school in general. And here we have ninety-five point twenty-six percent daily attendance. And then our PBIS data, that's Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies, and that's off of major office discipline referrals. Now, the PBIS model, the goal that you want to get to is eighty, fifteen, and five. And so we're just slightly below each of those levels, but we are continuing to look at positive interventions to assist our students. Three things that we do also with helping our staff and students through PLC is, one, we do data teams. And data teams, we do that three times a month, where our teachers meet as departments and look at data, students' assessment data, to help them improve in their classroom. We also devote two hours of diversity PD per month. And that is so that when we're talking about looking at things through a racial equity lens, it's not a taboo conversation, but it's something that everyone is comfortable with. And one of the methods that we use is what's called the Race Card. Three times a year, we're on our second time. We have our staff write a question about race that they have always wanted to ask. We put it in a jar, we pull a race card, and we meet in individual groups, discuss it, and then report out. And now we will talk about lesson planning and powerful instruction.
I apologize. Now it's my turn to speak, so. So we talked about mindful lesson planning and powerful instruction. These both go back to our school improvement plan and our target page, which is kind of a focus on that. So what we have here is multiple ways in which we're striving for increased instructional delivery and retention by students. You'll see the three different variations of co-teaching. Co-teaching with two content teachers, like I said, two literacy teachers. EL co-teaching would be a literacy or math teacher with an EL, our English language learner trained teacher, supporting the language skills. And then we have special ed co-teaching, where the special education teacher would push into a classroom. In all these cases, two teachers work together to plan, deliver, and prepare the instruction equitably. So they're both equal members of that classroom. We also emphasize our Chinese immersion program at the middle level, which is slightly different than at the elementary level. At elementary, we're full immersion, where students are spending the vast majority of their day in Chinese language instruction. When they move to the middle level, they're spending maybe two to three hours a day. So less than half in most cases. And that's focused more on social studies, science, or language arts. So it looks a little different at the middle level than it does at the high school or at the elementary level. Instructional rounds, professional development, teaming. So these are some areas that we're working to provide additional supports and training for teachers so that they can reach their most effective levels of instruction. Instructional rounds provides an opportunity for teachers to volunteer to have their classrooms observed by other teachers. And we also have teachers who volunteer to do the observing. They walk through classrooms focused on student learning indicators from our Thoughtful Classroom Framework. And they look at to see how students are learning best in a variety of different instructional ways. So teachers are able to learn from each other. We've had strong feedback from teachers find this to be very useful to helping them be more aware of ways that they can reach students differently. We also have professional development that we offer one hour per month. That's created and kind of set out by our leadership team to match back to our target page in School Improvement Plan. So it's team-driven through our teacher leadership. And then we also have teaming, and that looks different. We provide some common planning time for departments in some grade levels and for across teams in, say, sixth grade where they work across content areas to kind of wrap around our sixth grade students. A big purpose through our Thoughtful Classroom Framework is our evaluation and observation tool. But it's also really a tool to emphasize continual growth as teachers through our instruction. So we emphasize the Thoughtful Classroom, like we said, through our instructional rounds. We also do our professional development around that. We have a couple of resources that we use to kind of pull out ways in which teachers can not only advance their instruction, but also work through that observational protocol. We also have three other major areas here. AVID is advancement via individual determination. And WICER is actually an acronym that's a subset of AVID that not only meets the focus on working with students who are... AVID's focus mainly around getting students to understand how to do school, how to study, how to be organized, how to prepare themselves, and then how to communicate and respond at a high level. And WICER is writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading to learn. And so that's like a lesson planning structural process that teachers implement on a regular basis. To be consistent, that helps teachers understand, our students understand what the teacher's doing, the arc of the instruction. PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And that's a program that's focused on identifying what's going well, what students are doing right, providing instruction on what we expect to see beforehand, coaching students when they're doing it, and then identifying those positive behaviors instead of responding to negative behaviors.
So here at North, we have three cornerstones for student success. Behind me, I have some teachers and some students who will be speaking further about the programs that they're involved in. So the three cornerstone that we have here at North are safety, cooperation, and kindness. So for safety, we have our bully prevention program. We recently hired Kimberly Tran, who runs our, is our bully prevention specialist. And it's really important to have her within the building because we know we're in middle school. And when situations arise pertaining to bullying, she's someone who can reach out and speak to those students immediately and come up with key ways to solve those problems. And she's been an extreme help within the building. For cooperation, we have our CMPS, that's right behind me, that'll be speaking shortly about their program.
Hello, my name is Grace. And the CMPS stands for Community Problem Solving. But we would like to introduce our favorite academic extracurricular after-school activity, FPS. The purpose of Future Problem Solving, FPS, is to teach students how to think, not what to think. Students are encouraged to think outside the box, to push beyond the bonds of conventional thought. This accomplishment, this is accomplished by teaching critical and creative thinking skills and problem solving and discussion-making skills via a six-step process. Developing these skills helps students to improve their academic and social achievement.
These are the benefits of the FPS program are endless. Due to the fact that the program curriculum encourages students to improve their critical, creative, and analytical thinking skills, stimulates students' knowledge and interest in the future, extends written and verbal communication, develops and improves research proficiency, provides opportunities to apply process tools and methods to real-world problems, guides students to become more self-directed and responsible, develops teamwork skills, and promotes decision-making techniques to reach agreement with team members.
One of the programs we have under the umbrella of FPS, which is Future Problem Solving, is Global Issue Problem Solving, which is GIPS, that can have up to four members. We also have Scenario Writing, which is a program where the kid, they write a future scene, it can't be more than fifteen hundred words. And then they submit it, and it gets evaluated. And then if they can move on, they're, let that known. And then they edit it again. And then GIPS is, they use the six-step problem-solving process, and they write a packet about it. And you can go to regional, state, and internationals for both of those.
CMPS encourages students to become agents of change in their communities. Students will explore challenges in their community, determine the underlying problem, brainstorm possible solutions, develop criteria to determine the best solution, develop an action plan, and carry the action plan out. These civic projects allow students to become a part of the solution in their communities instead of being part of the problem.
Students decide on an issue affecting their school, local, or global community. Research an area of concern, determine the underlying problem, generate solution ideas, develop a plan of action, and put that plan into action. The plan needs to be sustainable, transferable to other settings, and involve many parts of their community. To prepare for competition, CMPS teams or individuals prepare a six-page written report, six-page visual addendum, scrapbook, display, and media presentation to share with visitors and judges. CMPS teams and individuals compete at the state level and are eligible to compete at the International FPS Conference each year.
So we have covered many topics such as an awareness of boy behavior, welcoming new students, staff, family and families, improving intersection safety, increasing positive interpersonal communication, a CMPS program awareness, reducing distracted driving, alleviating cultural tension, involving students with disabilities in after-school activities, transition from elementary to middle school, and preventing injuries in high school sports. This year, some of our project topics include shining a light on teenage anxiety, encouraging people to get off devices and go outdoors, responding to violent crime, improving the health of the Mississippi River, supporting high school students in poverty, and bringing positivity and happiness back to our community.
Eagle CMPS is like a family to us. Visit us, and you'll see why we say that. If you would like to learn more about CMPS or any FPS program component, please check out www.mnfpsp.org or www.fpspi.org. Or you can visit us at North Junior High any day of the week, even Saturdays. You can also join our virtual family through email, Or you can call us, (320) 251-2159, extension 4133. And I accept calls beginning at 6:15 a.m. Follow us on Twitter, @eaglecmps, or on Instagram, @eaglecmps. Come and see us in action at the State FPS Competition, this year being hosted here in St. Cloud at Apollo High School for the first time ever outside the metro area. Saturday, March 25th, put it on your calendar. We will be sending you the calendar, but there is schedule for the day. It begins at 7:00 a.m., ends at eight-ish, okay, p.m., okay? And we would love for you to be a part of our CMPS family in any way you can to help us make a difference in our world and achieve the positive changes that we'd all like to see. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Just, there's so much to hear and reflect upon, and it's all good. Just couldn't help but take this moment, however, just to make an observation on one of your slides of the school and the slide with that Jacob Wetterling Memorial Tree. It's a beautiful slide. It's a beautiful school, by the way, now with all the improvements that have been made. This reminds me of the Jacob Wetterling eleven traits. And one of those that we know that are part of the Jacob Wetterling number eleven is be kind. And that was stressed in your presentation tonight, kindness as part of the lens through which we're looking at all things. So I just wanted to make that observation. And I think that, golly, we're living right now in a very difficult time, perhaps, in our nation. And kindness is something that we need more and more of. That's Bruce Moe saying that. That might not be the opinion of anybody else.
Well, one of our projects is about bringing back positivity and happiness. And we can have her email you her positivity challenge for the month of March.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We're not done. I'm sorry. We're leaving the best for last of students' class. Sorry about that. And what a great segue, because our SLC has an initiative of hashtag eleven. So if I can have Ms. Mitchell and her students.
I'm Sasha Cool, grade seven. And this is Paige Christensen, grade eight. And we are part of the North Junior High Student Leadership Council.
So basically, we elected four officers, and we have approximately sixty or so students from grades six through eight. And we meet once a week for fifteen minutes on Fridays.
One of the issues that students brought up that we talked about was string bags. This was the process that we go through when we introduce these issues. It's raised by students, and then student council explores what it's about. We meet with administration to share their point of view. And like, we surveyed teachers. And our next, and then we take the following steps. And some issues about string bags that students brought up is that it makes it so that they have all materials necessary for class and so that they arrive on time to their classes. Another issue that we use the same process for is lunch. We have helped try to fix the lunch lines by talking to administration in the RP Committee. And we have talked to our cafeteria staff about how to get lunch to be quieter.
So another issue that the students at North kind of voted on was hashtag eleven, which is the Jacob Wetterling, like, eleven traits. So we have banners that we will be hanging up in the hallways and, yeah, in the hallways. And then we have posters of the eleven things that are in every classroom. And then, right now, we are putting quotes in the, for each trait in the announcements. And then the other group is school spirit. So we are working on making students have more pride in the school. And we are working on doing theme days once a month and Spirit Week.
And we thank the LEAF Foundation for sponsoring us. Thank you.
There's hashtag eleven that shows up in our schools all the time.
Oh, yeah.
Because they wear it. I get to have the privilege of just taking one minute to let them know about one of our other major student organizations, and that's Eagles Act. I've been working with them for four years. Some of these fine people with us are part of Eagles Act as well. We are a team of about a hundred and sixty students and five adults who are dedicated to action and service toward our local and our global community. So they adopted a mission statement. Their mission statement reads, "We seek to participate as global citizens positively impacting our local and global community through informed, student-led action projects surrounding issues of importance to our world's youth." We believe our voices, service, and commitment have the power to improve the world. And they act on that repeatedly. So in a normal year, it starts with something like We Day. You've probably heard of that. So this year, we were fortunate to send thirty-six students to We Day. And we got the opportunity to go down and spend some time with Mark Keelberger, one of the founders of it, because they brought us backstage and down to it. And then we got to stand right at the stage. So they were pretty impressed because they got to reach out and touch the performers. We continue in the fall with We Scare, just like the rest of the district. So this year, we were able to raise fifteen hundred pounds of food or donate that to our area food shelves. We continue that in the fall with, we honor our veterans. So our eighth grade singers become ambassadors to the VA, and they sing at a concert, and they bring letters and packages of care to our veterans over at the VA in St. Cloud. As we move forward, then, our next big initiative is our lock-in. So we do, this year was our Fourth Annual Homelessness Awareness Lock-in. And so that is a, the whole piece behind that is a lot of action and service and education regarding the issues of housing and food fragility and just what that means in our community here in Minneapolis, or, excuse me, in Minnesota and in St. Cloud, as well as the larger world. And then they'll also do action projects connected with all of that. In February, we move into We Care Month. And so we just did our Post-It's of Care. So every locker in our building, so nine hundred and fifty post-its placed on lockers with positive messages. And every staff member in our building walked in on Valentine's Day to see messages of care for every single person of our community, our North community. And then we continue that right now with our February Week, another food drive, because we know that this is a high needs time, but not a high donation time. So we continue with that. One of our large recurring global initiatives is goats, our goat drive. So this will be our third goat drive, so it'll be goats three point oh. The first year we did this, we purchased, North was able to purchase enough for sixteen goats. Sixteen families in Kenya had an alternative income source. Last year, we raised twelve goats. So we'll see what the challenge is this year. And then we started a rain garden, was our big initiative last year. So you may have heard a little bit about that. So we planted a sustainable rain garden in that new bus chute. And then this year, it's expanding, and they are putting in a one-acre pollinator garden adjacent to that. So huge initiative to beautify our grounds and take action that way. We also have a group of students who, the second Saturday of every month, go to Place of Hope, and we volunteer there. So I meet the students there. We serve, prepare and serve a meal for area residents at Place of Hope. And we also owe thanks to a lot of people. So thank you very much to LEAF. We couldn't do some of what we do without you. But then we also are supported by YES, which is the Youth Energy Summit, Minnesota Native Landscapes, and Sauk River Watershed. So thank you to all of those people who help us out. And thank you for listening. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we are North Junior High Eagles. We're going to go quick here. Some pictures, that's our staff soaring like eagles, robotics team. And we are North Proud. And so I'm going to show this video real quick. Can't make it go faster than the three minutes that it is, sorry. When you're working with students, time is timeless. North Junior High School is a phenomenal institution for students to come to. There are three areas that we focus on. One is cooperation. And that is where we provide wraparound services for our students, homework help, and programs like Dreamline. The second one is safety. We have a bully prevention program. We also have programs like PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Programs. And finally, we have kindness, which is our cultural awareness program. And that is our language immersion, service learning, and AVID. So here at North Junior High School, we look at the whole student and provide a plethora of enrichment activities.
Our media center has a wide array of books for both our higher-level readers and lower-level readers. We also have our one-to-one iPad initiative, where every student has an iPad. Our teachers use Schoology primarily with our students, which is our learning management system, to help our students with their 21st century learning skills.
Co-teaching puts two teachers in the same room with a group of students who need additional support. This allows the students to grow as fast as they can, given both teachers are very tuned in on what they need and how to best meet those needs.
My teachers have really been there for me. They helped me get my grades up, and I feel cared for.
I have the opportunity to go and go through a class that I actually enjoy and love doing everything about.
One of my primary goals, or primary functions as a counselor, is to get students focused on doing better in school, getting them in appropriate classes, and preparing them for high school.
I get to work with the young people, teach them how to reflect on, you know, their feelings, identifying them and expressing them, and working through and building relationships.
AVID is a college readiness class where students apply to be in. And they are basically working on writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading skills to prepare them for high school and eventually going to college.
We start the year out by going to St. John's and going canoeing. And then we learn a lot about the Ojibwe and the early Dakota and going to the fur trade, where we're reading some books to go with it and making bandolier bags. And we've tied an interdisciplinary unit with the other subjects on my team to incorporate the fur trade. And it's really fun and exciting, unique class that we have here at North.
It's fun to learn Chinese at the North, since you already know some Chinese at elementary school. So in here, we learn more about Chinese cultures. We learn about American histories in Chinese. We also learn geography in Chinese. And we also learn a lot of activities, and we know a lot of Chinese cultures.
North is always accepting of other students. And one of the things that we really pride ourselves on is the fact that we include everyone, no matter what their socioeconomic status is. Everyone's welcome to be involved in activities.
Part of my role is to make sure that we have activities for our students throughout the school year. Recently, we had our encouragement tree for our seventh grade students to help build their confidence, not only in the classroom, but also within the community and their everyday life as well.
I tell you, just from a parent standpoint and a culture standpoint, the staff here is wonderful. People get along well. There's lots of opportunities. It's been a great education and a great place for my kids. People get along well. There's lots of opportunities. It's been a great education and a great place for my kids. So I encourage all parents to send their kids to North Junior High.
North Proud!
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 Okay. No, we won't ask you to do the dab. Questions? Yeah. Oh, I saw you. That's good, Mr. Hinchison. All right, you're off the cuff. You didn't practice it? Okay. Oh, okay, I got you. I got you. Okay, I know we're well over our time, but of course, we want to leave, uh, time for questions.
Yep, and that's, that's fine. You go a little bit over. We got lots of time. I want to have all the kids, before we start questions, I want all the kids from North that, that spoke to come down again. There was, there was something very important missing from the presentation, so you can, if, if I could, I want to ask each of you to come up and tell us your name. You only have to tell us your first name, but you need to tell us their name. And then, um, how about if you tell us your name and what your favorite class is at North and why?
Um, I'm Grace, and my favorite class is science.
I'm Debbie, and my favorite class is Spanish, even though I took German.
I'm Devin, my favorite class is Spanish.
I'm Sandy, and my favorite class is art.
I'm Sasha, and my favorite class is science.
I'm Paige, and my favorite class is Spanish.
I'm Riley, and my favorite class is language arts.
I'm Miss Doyle, and my favorite class is Spanish.
Super. Um, thank you for coming up and doing that. You forgot, most, most of you, your, your Student Leadership Council people told us their names, but everybody else forgot to say their name before they, and I don't, I don't know if you were asked to, but, but, um.
Thank you for reminding us of that.
But I, I just wanted to make sure that we got your names. Uh, questions? Jeff? Some of you might know, uh, Community Linkage is planning an event at North Junior High on April sixth, and I'm counting on those kids to help. Can I count on them? Perfect. Thanks.
They come in on Saturday, so whatever you need.
All right. Bruce, Bruce, no. Monica? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.